Hey, here we are. Let's see, welcome to the hotel room. Why is that thing right there? Oh, we got five people on. Hey guys, I'm on my cellphone tonight. Here's Becky Albert.
Hi.
We're in Texas.
We are.
At our annual span meeting that is being held at the Global Spears Center. Thank you so much Chuck Pierce and Brian Coolman for welcoming our network. And so, hey Janet. The glory fell tonight, I'm saying. It was awesome. We miss you. We miss you. And so, oh, it's so different. Cause like when I do it on my, we're like, we're having this discussion, guys, while y'all are coming on. And so, hey, there's a vet and there's, yeah, and so, well, they can still see you.
Oh, it's fine.
Hey, can y'all still see Becky? Or it's different on my phone. The chat's usually way over here. And now the chat's over here. So when y'all are chatting, y'all can still see Becky, right? Someone sits in, yes.
We just can't see me.
Our kids are laughing. My kid's laughing at us. Hi, Becca. It's Jennifer. Hey Jennifer. They're in Going Beyond this time. Yes, and Dalton.
Changed my life.
It changed her life. And we got someone from Canada. Canada. And so, we're gonna continue our discussion. Welcome to the hotel room. And man, what an incredible day.
We've had an amazing day.
Yeah, just in a ma- and the last thirty minutes of the, we weren't expecting God to just ca- he just crashed in on us. We did give him permission. But God's glory just came and, and I did something I know haven't, I usually don't do unless I'm with Anthony Turner. Because we flow so well together. And I broke out in prophetic song and he broke out in prophetic song.
It was awesome.
God's glory came. So it was awesome. I know. That wor- oh, Rosie is on. That worship she put. And I'm like, right? Yeah, it's just powerful. So we're really excited about what God's gonna do.
We are.
Yeah. So those of you that don't know Becky, uh, cause some of our friends are on that know both of us. And some of them were there today. This is Becky Albert and she is amazing. And she has a ministry, Armies arising. And she teaches on prayer and intercession and prophetic. And she's kind, has a book, I Have a Voice, which is really powerful.
Testimony.
Yep. You wanna talk about it a little bit?
Oh, no, go.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just my testimony of deliverance, how God delivered me.
Set you free. And it's a powerful testimony. And she has a voice. And so, you got all pe- these people are saying hi to you.
Somebody loves you.
Yes, they do. Did you see that? Isn't that awesome? So you have Becca and Becky. And we're gonna talk about, I said, you gotta do my next Discerning the Spirit realm together. And so, we're gonna, oh, look at that. Rosie says it's an awesome book. So y'all need, how can they get the book? Tell them.
Well, you can go to my website armiesarising.org and you can order it right there on my website.
I have a voice.
A voice. I don't have a copy to show you.
Armies arising.
Armiesarising.org.
Dot org.
Yes.
Alright, so you can go there and order your copy of her book.
Please do.
And so, what we are doing, uh, what we are gonna do tonight is we're gonna continue the discussion of discerning the spirit realm.
Let's do it.
And we're gonna talk about angels. So those of you that have the book, and sometimes people kind of follow along, I think it's chapter six. And I, you know, unless I, these are, yes, it's chapter six.
Chapter six.
It says right here, chapter six.
Oh, there it is.
There it is.
We're a little bit tired.
And so anyways, chapter six in the book. And, you know, and I know last week I jumped out of order because I started talking about discerning the spirit realm and demonic strongmen. And I, I was really teaching people about what's in the atmosphere right now.
Absolutely.
And all the, you know, yuck that has been released in the nation.
Yes.
And how we've got to learn to discern it and rise above that and not be ones that fall in the trap of that, right?
Teaching, yeah.
And so, but, uh, tonight, we're gonna talk about discerning angels. And I'm gonna read to you this opening scripture that I have in, in chapter six, right of discerning the spirit realm. Great scripture, Hebrews one fourteen. Are not all angels ministering spirits sent to serve those who inherit salvation? Guys, it's so awesome. We are not alone. You know, God, God has not left us, you know, to battle alone. He hasn't left us to walk this life alone. I mean, he's with us.
Absolutely.
But it's also incredible, cause there's angel armies that he has sent to partner with us. And, and I'm gonna read to you a quote. It's in the book and it's under the subtitle, Angels are Messengers. And this is a, a quote from Billy Graham.
Come on.
And I was like, when I pulled this old book out that my father-in-law gave me, who's a pastor, and I was like, Billy Graham wrote a book on angels. And it's, uh, yes. And it's a great quote. Listen to this.
Yeah.
Angels belong to a uniquely different dimension of creation, which we, limited to the natural order, can scarcely comprehend. In this angelic domain, the limitations are different from those God has imposed on our natural order. He has given angels higher knowledge, power, and mobility than us. Have you ever seen or met one of those superior beings called angels? They are God's messengers, whose chief business is to carry out his orders in the world. He has given them an ambassadorial charge. He has designed and empowered them as holy deputies to, to perform works of righteousness. In this way, they assist him as their creator, while he sovereignly controls the universe. He has given them the capacity to bring his holy enterprises into a successful conclusion. Isn't that powerful?
Great quote.
So, yes. And so, God has not left us alone. And so, we're gonna talk about angel stories. And I, there's different categories in the chapter. Like, you know, angels are messengers, right?
Absolutely.
Angels are bearers of God. And, you know, and angels will defend us. There's all these different categories. And so, you know, Becky, is there one that you wanna start to share with about how angels have encounters you've had with angels?
But, um, I think one of the most profound times that I had an encounter with, well, there've been several. But, um, I'd gone to Peter Wagner's Congress. Remember when he did those congresses and he didn't wanna call them conferences? We were in Nashville, Tennessee.
Yes.
We were there. You were a teacher there at that Congress. I didn't know you then. But we were in deep worship and I was in awe because there were thousands of people there. That was a huge turnout. I think like twelve, fifteen thousand people came to Nashville that year, uh, to the Congress. And we were in worship and all of a sudden, my eyes were opened in the spiritual realm, Becca. And, well, even with my natural eyes, I saw angels. And I saw when they came in the building. And they were doing a ring dance around the top of our heads, the people in the audience. And they were worshiping with us. They were dancing to our worship. And so, I am just in awe of what I'm seeing. And all of a sudden, I feel this presence behind me. And it's like someone had just came and stood right up next to me, behind me. You could feel the heat emanating. And I knew, no one had to tell me it was an angel, because the holiness of God just surrounded me. And he put his hand very gently on my left shoulder from behind. And he said, my name is, and he told me his name. Is it okay to say?
Yeah.
He said, my name is Revelation. And, uh, the Lord has sent me to be with you. And he said, I will be with you in your ministry. Well, I wasn't in ministry at the time. And so, I, I just was so excited. And I thought, okay, that's great, but I don't have a ministry. But, uh, he has stayed with me.
Yeah.
And so, there are many times when I'm in the word, I'm in worship, I'm studying or preparing. And I feel his presence. And every time he comes, I get a revelation from the word of God. I get a, a fresh insight into the word that I haven't had before.
Yeah.
So I, he's a messenger that comes to me and is with me and been assigned to me. And I know he's there.
It's awesome.
It is awesome.
Isn't that awesome? You know, and I had a similar experience in Mississippi, you know? And after the Lord had had us do this incredible prayer assignment.
Right.
And just incredible breakthrough. And I won't go into that whole story on this one, on this teaching. But literally, the next day, there was like this open heaven, right, in the service.
Yeah.
And everybody was like, they were just laid out face down in the presence of the Lord. And, and you could feel this holiness, just like you do, come into the room. And I felt like, he, it was like being something, I knew they weren't human.
You just know.
Something around me. And my spiritual eyes were opened and my ears. And the Lord spoke to me. And he said, these are the four angels I have now assigned to you. And they will go with you everywhere, in the nation and the nations. That was two thousand and nine.
Yeah.
And so, even like today, when we got into that prophetic moment at the conference, one lady came running up behind. She goes, I know you know this. You know, she came running up to me. And she said, you've got angels. And I was like, I, she goes, and as soon as you started singing prophetically. I mean, she said, they were there, front and center.
I love it.
And, you know, and so they do. And I've been hearing that report since two thousand and nine. And why is this so important? Because these are angels that are sent to protect me.
Right.
Because of the warfare that we do. We're prophetic warriors. We do warfare assignments. Sometimes the Lord will have us pray against principalities and powers. Ah, that's another teaching. Don't ever do that by yourself on your own. But, you know, get my book Glory Warfare, of Authority to Tread.
Absolutely.
They're there. And like sometimes, and Denise is here too. Say hi.
Hi.
Denise is over here and Rebecca Boo, our daughter's over here. Say hi. And sometimes, guys, right when we're on assignment, and we start worshiping the Lord. I will, I'll start smiling and giggling, like, and giggling, the angels are worshiping with us. Yes. And so, so we have, they minister to us.
They do.
There, we have angels that are assigned to us, angels, warring angels that God will send to war on our behalf and protect us. You know, and, and one time for me, this, I'll try not to get emotional.
Okay.
I'll try not to. But it's the story that I opened this chapter with. And it was right after my dad had passed away.
Right.
It was that night. And my mom and I were, I'm gonna get emotional. My mom and I were back at their house, the two of us, for the first time by ourselves. And it had been, you know, we hadn't slept much that week. And, um, and we knew my dad was with Jesus, was, was with the Lord. And so, my mom went to bed. And I said, Mom, you've, we haven't had a lot of sleep. You've got to get sleep. This week's really about to get busy. Made sure she was in her bed asleep.
Right.
Closed her door and went to the bedroom that my husband and I would always sleep in when we were at their home. And I was, you know, missing my dad so sad. And I all of a sudden heard this noise.
Yeah.
And I'm like, what is that noise? And, and so, I walk, uh, you know, down the hallway by my mom's door, thinking, oh, maybe it's her. Cracked the door. She, she really, it had been an intense week. So she really was, praise God, in a deep sleep. I really think that was supernatural that night. Cause she had just lost my dad. And they had been together since they were eighteen. And, um, but, and I was like, okay, it's not her. She's asleep. She's okay. And the noise kept getting louder. So I went into the family room. And I go into the family room. And I'm like, and, and, and I could hear it moving. So finally, I walked into the kitchen, right? And when I walked into the kitchen, all of a sudden, there was like this holy presence surrounding them. It's surrounding me and this noise. And I realized, oh, I'm hearing angels. And they brought a message from heaven to me.
Yeah.
And the message was, Becca, be good, be strong. Your dad is great.
Oh.
And then they instantly just went off, like from that room, in this rejoicing sound. And I felt kitchen floor.
Wow.
And I began to weep.
Wow.
And the next day, I told my mom, listen, you need to hear what happened last night. And she just wept. It was just such a beautiful thing. So, you know, angels will minister to us. They protect us. They deliver messages. They're assigned to us. Is God sending us out on assignments, you know? And I'll share another one, then you can share one.
Okay, I will.
You know, and, and, you know, but another awesome thing, we, I was in Kenya ministering. And, ooh, Lord, I'm just saying, it was late night. And, and so, but it was good. And instead of having one of their church members, right, drive us home. Um, they said, we'll just pay for your taxi ride, drive us home. When you live in hotels on the road all the, all the time, home, hotel rooms are home. So, but, but, um, we'll have a taxi driver take you to the hotel. It's only a five, ten minute drive. We'll pay them ahead of time. Make sure you have a good one. We said, sure, not a problem. We get into the taxi and we're starting to head back to the hotel. And, uh, during this time, the bus drivers and the taxis were in a feud. Because the taxi drivers, like, had lowered their prices to get more business. So therefore, the bus drivers' buses weren't getting full. So there was this battle going on. So we get like literally halfway to our hotel. And we're in this intersection and all of a sudden, these big buses surround our taxi cab.
Lord.
And they're not letting us out. And they're mad. And, and so, and so the taxi driver said, I think y'all are gonna have to get out and walk. I said, I'm not getting out and walking in this. And I looked at my friend that was traveling with me, Pam, and I said, start praying in tongues now. If you don't pray in tongues, we do. Oh, well. But anyway, so literally, she's starting to pray in her prayer language. And I lit- and the taxi driver said, I don't think we're gonna be able to get out of this. I said, you might not be able to get us out of this, but I know somebody who can.
Yeah.
So while Pam is praying in tongues, I said, Lord, we need an angel. We need assistance now. And, cause it was getting a little heated.
Right.
Right around us. And so, out of nowhere comes this elderly looking gentleman.
Right.
And, and he walks over to the taxi driver, hits, hits the window. And he says, do you need help? And he said, yes. So the taxi dri- and the, this old elderly man says to the taxi driver, okay, not a problem. Walks over to the bus, you know, that's directly behind us, and hits the door like that on the bus. And the bus driver cracks open the door. And the gentleman says something to him. We can't hear him. Horns are honking. There's a lot of, just very calmly says something to him. And that bus driver closes the door to that bus. And in pure obedience, starts shimmying back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth. To make enough room for our taxi to go through in order that we can get out to safety and get to our hotel.
Wow.
And then we turned, because we turned, the taxi driver's like, we must thank this older gentleman. And he turned instantly as soon as we got through. And he was gone. He had just vanished.
Yeah.
Like he just was not there.
Yeah.
And the taxi driver said, what kind of God do you pray to again in that language? Because you prayed that he would send an angel and someone to help us, and he did. I wanna know that God. And so, it ended up being this whole moment of evangelism, laying hands on this taxi driver. God sent the angel to rescue us. I'm just saying.
Awesome.
I mean, the supernatural, you know, and the spirit realm is more real than the physical realm.
Certainly is, Becca.
And so, we're not left alone in this world.
I know.
Do you have another one?
I do, let me check. I, I thought of two real quick ones.
Okay, good.
So several years ago, my children were young. They were, uh, under ten years old. I had a little boy and little girl. We were in the church, headed to church, in the van, headed to church on Sunday morning. It was Easter Sunday morning. And, um, we had to, we lived in a little town and our church was about twenty miles away in another small town. So we had to get out on the highway. And we were running late.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I'm trying to hurry the kids along. And we're in our van. And we're on a small, tiny, little two-lane highway. And all of a sudden, and it just happens this fast, a semi truck crossed the middle line and is coming at us head-on.
Wow.
In my van. And I only had time to say, Jesus. That's all I had time to say. And then I was preparing for impact. I see a flash of light.
Come on.
Come through the van. And I look in my rearview mirror, people, honest to God, I don't, you just can't explain the supernatural. That semi is behind me. It's like it went through our van. And it's behind me, going the wrong way in my lane. And we were perfectly.
Come on, God.
Presence of God was so strong in our van.
Come on, God.
My children were crying. I pull off the highway. I'm bawling my eyes out, because we know we have supernaturally been delivered from death.
Wow.
It was intense. So, yes, thank you, Jesus. Then, really, Becca, just a year ago, Christmas, remember my granddaughter was in that terrible car accident?
Yes.
She, she hydroplaned on the highway. It was raining really, really bad. And she, we're in the emergency room. We'd gotten the call. And she said, Nana, and she's crying, cause she was in pain. Nana, she said, I saw the angel. I know, I cry when I tell this story. She said, I saw this big angel came and he picked me up out of the car. And she said, I watched the car hydroplane off the highway. And I watched it swirl around and hit the ground. And she said, when, when the car hit the ground, he put me back in the car.
Wow.
And she's in the emergency room singing about angels and singing in the spirit and singing about angels. And she's in, she broke her back in six places.
And was in pain.
And had gashed her face open and was in terrible pain. But she was praising God and thanking him for the angel that picked her up out of her car. Because had she been in the car when it impacted the ground like it had, she would not have survived. So, those are two incredible stories of the deliverance that God gives us. And she said to me the same thing. She said, Nana, the only thing I had, had time to do was say, Jesus, help me. And I closed my eyes. And she said, immediately, the angel was there.
Come on, God.
Come on, Jesus.
Come on, God. Isn't that awesome, guys?
So precious.
So this is what's so beautiful about the spirit realm. And how much our heavenly Father loves us.
He does.
You know, he, he wants us to know there are more for us than against us.
Open our eyes to see.
Open their eyes to see. For his servant, Lord, open his eyes. And he can see there are more for us than against us.
Yes.
And he opened his eyes. And there was this army of angels, filled with angels, chariots, and fire. I'm just saying.
They're on our side.
They're on our side. You know, and, and I, and I know this, you know, they, they provide protection and deliverance. You know, and you guys can, we, we don't have to go through the whole chapter. They can appear in human form. We, I just gave that testimony. Right? They can distribute cer- supernatural provision. You know, that, and, and there's scripture references to all of these, that you can look at these in the, in the book. They're ministering spirits, you know, they're, they're angels that are sent to minister to us. And just like what happened when my dad, you know, passed away. And, you know, and all of that. There's just so many testimonies, you know, and they rejoice when sinners are saved. I love it, when the Lord will open my spiritual ears, when I'm ministering at altar call.
Right.
Right? At, at a conference. And people are getting saved. And all of a sudden, I can hear heaven rejoicing, like, and the angelic realm rejoicing.
Yeah.
Over that salvation. You know, we not, we aren't ever supposed to worship angels. Angels would never wanna take the worship of the Lord. And sometimes, even when people encounter the angelic, it's beautiful and wonderful. And sometimes, it can be so holy.
Yeah.
You know, some, it says in the Bible.
A little bit fearful.
A little bit fearful. It says grown men would fall on their faces. And the, and the presence of the angel of the Lord at times.
Yeah.
And, you know, and, and I just shared a story today at our prayer gathering about when the Argentine revival broke out from nineteen forty-nine to nineteen sixty-eight. And how that started with an encounter with the angel of the Lord, with students at a Bible institute. And that was holy. It was very holy. And it brought the fear of the Lord. It was so holy. And it took them into months of deep intercession.
Yeah.
And God broke out, as I'm making it really short, but God broke out in revival in that nation. And even the Holy Spirit, it said, would talk to them, that Michael was partnering with them in their intercession. And they didn't realize that when they were in these months of intercession, that it was going to birth revival, that the strong man over Argentina would be defeated. And that it was gonna cause a cleansing, sweeping move of corruption in the nation.
Right.
And that God was moving, began to move in, you know, in revival and awakening.
Yeah.
And, and so, it's just amazing, guys. And I hope this encourages you. You know, one other, one other testimony, and angels, like I just said, assist in shaping history. Which is what I, this testimony I just shared about Argentina. That book is amazing. Secret to the Argentine revival. And don't get the hundred and twenty something dollar.
Forty-two dollars.
Hundred and forty-two dollar.
On Amazon.
Yeah. On my Facebook page, that, that's, yeah. There's a place you can go, I can't remember. It's on my personal Facebook page when I posted about the book. And, and Brad Herman, my dear friend, posted where you can get it. I can't remember where. But if you go to my personal Facebook page and you look at that, anyway.
We'll go look.
We'll go look.
Yeah, cause I want the book.
Yes. And I can't remember where to tell people to go. But let me share this one last testimony. Cause this happened with our daughter Kendall when she was four.
Okay, I remember this story.
Yes. She came out to see her and discern her and talking about the angelic. She could see angelic. She could see demonic. She could see Jesus. I mean, there was one time I laid her down for a nap and she came out. She goes, Mama, Jesus just talked to me through the radio. I went, what? And she said, Mama, I was listening to my Barney music. And Jesus spoke to me. I said, what did he say? He said, Kendall, I love you.
Oh, that's so sweet.
And so, she's like, Jesus told me that he loves me, Mom. And so, she just was very sensitive to the spirit realm. And I, Greg was about to come home, uh, for dinner from work. And I told her, Kendall, honey, go clean your room. And those of you that have heard me teach, you know this story. But I can't, just can't talk about the angelic without mentioning this story. Because listen to the faith of a child. Listen to the faith of a four-year-old. And that's what's so beautiful about this story.
It is.
And I said, honey, go clean your room. Daddy's about to be home from work. And I was making dinner. And she said, okay, Mama. And she goes to her room. And about five minutes later, she comes back. And she's mad. She's sassy. She's me on steroids. And she's real bossy in a good way. We love you, Kendall. And so, she's now thirty. Would you agree with that, Boo? My other daughter's sitting here.
Yes, 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 she agrees. Okay.
So anyway, but she came back, she had her hand on her hip. And, oh, she's mad. And she's tapping her foot and shaking her head. And, you know, just, she's mad. And she said, Mama, and she still calls me Mama to this day, just like that, Mama. And she said, you wanna know something? And I said, what, baby? She goes, you told me, clean my room. I said, yes. And she said, Mama, when I got to my room, there was one of those little evil bad things that you and daddy don't like, bad things. She's meaning a demon.
A demon.
And she said, Mama, you wanna know what it said to me? And I said, what? She said, it told me not to clean my room. And I said, well, what did you do? Mama, I stomped on its head and said, no, in Jesus's name. And Mama, that demon disappeared. She couldn't say disappear right. And I'm thinking, what? I know, first of all, I don't like that a demon's in my baby's room. Right? And then she said, Mama, you wanna know something else? I'm like, yes. She said, Mama, I have an angel. You and daddy have an angel. The twins were newborn. Mama, the twins, Becca and Katie, they have angels. And Mama, those angels help us, Mama. And I said, they do. She goes, Mama, you know what they do? Now, we never let our kids watch anything of witchcraft, violence, death, that kinda thing when they were young kids. So she had no gauge for what. And, and this is how you know she's really seen.
No reference for that.
And so, she said, they hold this thing. And she's holding her hands out. Pointy, shiny. It's big, pointy and shiny, Mama. They hold it like this. And Mama, those angels help. She goes, Mommy, you, you know what those angels do? I said, no. Tell me. And she said, Mama, they go like this, whoosh. Like she's swinging the sword and she makes that noise.
I love it.
And then she says, and Mama, those demons disappear. Like they disappear when the angels do that.
Yes, they do.
And then she says, Mama, you wanna know something else? I'm like, yes, I do. Thinking, what else is gonna come out of this four-year-old's mouth? She said, Mama, those demons know like you and daddy, cause she's four, right? No, not at all. Mama, you know what happens when you daddy pray in Jesus's name? I said, no. She goes, Mama, those demons go and they disappear. And then she leaves the kitchen to go clean her room. And I call my husband. I said, I just had a spiritual warfare one-on-one lesson by a four-year-old. A four-year-old.
I know.
So listen to how real, right?
Yeah.
That spirit realm is. And I just wanted to, we wanted to come on and just share these testimonies. And you can read the chapter in the book with all the scriptural references. I'm not gonna teach on any of this if I can't find it in the word of God.
We could talk about it all night.
We could talk all night.
Yeah.
But, you know, God, God has not left us alone. So what we wanna do tonight is, is we wrap this. But you know, God, God has not left us alone. So what we wanna do tonight is, is we wrap this teaching session up is just. Pray for you guys that you'll, that, that God will, oh, those of you that haven't seen, that he'll open your eyes to see. He'll open your ears to hear, or you'll just sense, you know, but sense, sense and feel, you know, we talk about this in this book. How do we sense and feel and know that the angelic is active around us, right? And, and so, you know, praying that there will be that uh, deeper awakening and, and realization. And discernment and, and sensitivity in that spirit realm. Because the Lord wants us to know, we are not alone. So you wanna pray, girl? Okay.
Father, we thank you that you've provided everything that we need to cause us to be successful in life, to cause us to be protected in life. You are Jehovah Jehovah, our provider, and you provide for every area of our lives. Lord, we're so thankful and grateful for the angelic host that you've given to us, to minister to us, to minister for us, to minister with us. And so Father, I ask for everyone listening to Becca's uh, uh, teaching tonight, that you would open their eyes to see. Maybe there's some who've never seen an angel or have never experienced an encounter with the angelic realm. And Lord, it's our inheritance. It's our birthright. So I ask that you open their eyes to see, that you would open their discernment in a new way in this season. That they would be able to sense the presence of the Lord. They would be able to sense the angelic realm. Open their ears to hear, Lord. That is the most precious thing in the world to hear the angels worshiping and singing. So Lord, let them hear, let them encounter your ministering spirits, that they would know that they know. It is an angel sent from heaven that is there to minister with them, to them and for them. In Jesus's.
In Jesus's name, amen. Guys, thank you for coming on. We pray that you enjoyed this. And we, you know, the best way to talk about the angelic realm is just to talk about it. Stirs up faith and just share the testimonies. There's even other testimonies in this chapter that we didn't even get to about, you know, even, even more, you know. And scriptural references and, you know, the one, I love this, and I'll say this, remember when Peter was in prison? And the church was praying. And the angel shows up and wakes Peter up, wake up, wake up. And escorts Peter out of the prison onto the street. He didn't even realize it was an angel until like he's out on the street and walking out there. And so, you know, guys, God's just good. And so I just say yes and amen to the prayer that you just prayed. And we just thank you, Lord, that, that, Lord, for all who are watching now and who will watch, let there be that awakening, that awakened discernment. In the spirit realm, not just the negative, but the good, the awesome, the wonderful. Angelic realm and the kingdom of heaven realm. Amen. Alright, guys, we love you. Thank you for coming on. So good, so good. And we'll be back next Thursday, same time, but we won't be in the hotel room anymore. Okay, alright, talk to you soon. God bless, bye-bye. And I don't know how to do this.